What's this?
It's a balloon band.
That's right.
Yeah.
I heard some pop there as soon as it got in.
I told you thirty seconds.
So, uh, where were you?
It must be the ball being made.
Your son filled in for you.
Thank you.
There was a lot of hot air.
There you go.
Then you're going to be scared.
You want to go to school there now?
I dropped, I guess I dropped hard and someone found him in a parking lot. Yeah, the envelope.
I was just testing.
Was that a practice run?
Call this meeting to order. Please do roll call.
Yes. Councilmember Lorre Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Rush?
Here.
Councilmember Simmons?
Present.
Mayor Pro Temtisari?
Here.
Mayor Bootsma?
Here. Uh, invocation be led by Pastor James Ternal of Eastvale Bible Church. Welcome.
God, we are so grateful for your favor and your love. We thank you, Lord, for these that you have placed in this city to give us guidance, to give us direction. Now we thank you for your word tells us that you are the one who has established civic authority, got to provide order, to help protect and provide peace. So now we pray that wisdom would take place in this meeting today. God, that you would give great insight, that you would give understanding, that you would help them to continue to promote peace and kindness, God, promote civic authority, God, in this great city of Eastvale. Now we pray for your favor upon these, that you have a place to lead us. Now we thank you for just the opportunity to be here. We thank you for the citizens. We thank you for those, Lord, who work in this city, those who live in this city, God. And God, we pray that you would just continue to keep your hands of favor upon Eastvale, prosper us and grow us, God, that we might be a light in this area. We thank you right now, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. The pledge of allegiance be led by Natalie Diaz.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move to student report, update by Natalie Diaz.
Claire, okay, sorry, yeah. Hello, wait, is it on? Oh, okay, sorry. Claire Barton had their first day of school today, August tenth. This is the first year of them being on a traditional schedule, along with the city's high school and junior highs. Furthermore, the parent information night will be held on August eighteenth at 5:00 PM. Some more exciting news is that Claire Barton's first annual Gate Color Run 5K will be held on Saturday, August twenty-seventh, at the American Heroes Park. This will be a great family fun event, and more information can be found on Claire Barton's school site, along with a link to register. Ronald Regan Elementary has, has so far had a successful and productive year. B-Track is now back to school, which means that all tracks have officially started the new school year. Ronald Regan is proud to have its second year open in full swing. Recently, the school had a packed multipurpose room for their watchdog, watchdogs program, which stands for Dads of Great Students. Over four hundred people attended, and a hundred pizzas were eaten. The meeting was very successful, and Regan is off to a great start for getting dads and male role models on campus. An exciting Patriots' Day celebration is tentatively being scheduled for September twelfth, but the date and time is still to be confirmed by the school's organization committee. Eleanor Roosevelt High School had their first day of school today as well. Some very exciting news is that the STEM program has begun this year for incoming freshmen. STEM stands for Fields of Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. Eleanor Roosevelt plans to have a successful school year with many events coming soon. Rosa Parks, Harada, and Eastvale Elementary have finally gotten the school year in full swing, with B-Track having their first day of school last week on August second. River Heights Intermediate School also had their first day of school today, August tenth. Back-to-school night will be held next week on Wednesday, August fifteenth, from 5:30 to 8:30 PM. Furthermore, on September fifth, will be there, there will be no school due to a Labor Day holiday. Another exciting event coming up is the Parents as Partners Coffee with the Principal, which will be meeting on September sixth. The discussion topic for the meeting will be supporting student success in secondary school. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for your report. No questions. You must have covered it all. Okay, we move to public comment. First speaker, May Rawu Gudiaz.
Good evening, City Council, staff and members of the community. On behalf of Dr. Otis Silvermires and we did, we would like to thank our very own watchdog, which Natalie just mentioned, Dickie Simmons. He was, when I woke up this morning, saw, I saw him waiting in, I'm like, oh, he got in early. He looked at.
Drop and go.
He was here very early to make sure our parents got in, our students were greeted, and that's the role of the watchdog, to greet students, to be a presence, to make our school safe, but to make it even though it was safer. So, Dickie was our original watchdog, and it's nice to have him back, and he's willing to take as many hours as he wanted to give us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to mention is, was a construction in front of Silvermires. I was working, I started work two weeks before it opened today, and every time I would get out around three, I wasn't able to make a left, and I was very concerned about the construction in front. So, I did call the city, and it was nice to know, and I spoke to him, and it was nice to know they already had something in place. She assured me that by two o'clock, it was by the wrong time, and by two o'clock, it should be done. Well, today, it was about 1:30, and there was some hot stuff out there. There was a lot of trucks, there was an exposed road, and I was very concerned, so I called Joe, our city engineer, and I shared with him that I was concerned. Well, by 2:15, 2 something, it was all gone. By the time I went out there, everything was clear, parents ready to come in, come out, it was perfect. So, I also wanted to acknowledge the city of working with our district to ensure that traffic is strong. Great, and so, thank you. That's it?
Thank you. Is there any other people from the public who would like to make a public comment? Okay, you can come up and then fill out a paper, kind of introduce yourself.
Could I get the phone?
I'll let you fill that out after you.
Good evening, folks, councilmembers, residents, my name is Ali La, Vice President of Eastvale, Bob Warner. Just wanted to come and say thank you. We had a successful fundraiser this past weekend. We did, similar to Build a Booth, we did Build a House. We were in the corner of Sliceman and Archall, and at the corner of Hamner and Lyman. We were there for ninety-one, raised a little bit less than eleven hundred dollars. The funds will go for three families that are having financial difficulties, they're running to get the scholarships, so we can help them with their tuition, and also for the cheer, their fundraiser when they go on the road in the end of the year. So, again, just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to make? Okay, then we move down to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, before we hit the consent calendar, the city staff would like to request the city council to add another closed session item on the agenda. That would be under twelve point two, and under the government code, you're authorized to add an agenda item, under the circumstances, which is called a subsequent need item. This item came up after the agenda already went out, but prior to the meeting tonight. And the closed session, the title of the closed session is Conference with Legal Counsel: Anticipated Litigation. There is significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two of subdivision D of section five, four, nine, five, six point nine, and there is one potential case. You need a four-fifths vote to add this onto the agenda, so we would request that. Wanted you to make a motion to add this on the agenda, and then it'll be under twelve point two.
I'd like to make a motion to put this on the agenda.
Second.
Councilmember Lorre Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temtisari?
Aye.
Mayor Bootsma?
Aye.
Motion passes, five to zero.
Okay, move to the consent calendars. Is there any items need to be pulled?
So, move. Second. You can say.
Councilmember Lorre Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temtisari?
Aye.
Mayor Bootsma?
Aye.
Motion passes, five to zero.
Okay, we move to item eight, city council business, YouTube, eight-one, YouTube meeting auto, auto recording.
Good evening, Mayor Bootsma, council staff and residents. This evening, the item brought before you is to formally approve a YouTube account for file hosting, audio file hosting purposes. Currently, the city of Eastvale does not have a file hosting account. Our staff currently loads file, audio files for meetings in one-hour increments on the city's website, and this can be cumbersome. In the first slide, you can see that our July twenty-seventh council meeting is loaded in two parts due to the time of the meeting. Other previous meetings can be, were five parts, if you look at the slide. We are proposing, our staff would like to propose, per recommendation from Vision Internet, that we find a audio hosting account. They recommended using SoundCloud or YouTube, and they being Vision Internet. If you were to click on one of these links, it would then bring you to this screen, where it looks as if you would be able to toggle through to get to the item that you'd like to hear, and perhaps a public hearing or a business item. You're not able to do so. You would have to currently listen through the entire audio file to get to where you're trying to listen to. With SoundCloud, there was a cost. A free account was limited to only three hours of audio. A pro account was limited to six hours for sixty-three dollars per year. You may know that our council, our council meetings tend to run about two hours, and for the audio for our council meetings, planning commission meetings, and our public safety commission meetings, that amount of use, amount of hours would be used up fairly quickly. And with Vimeo, a, there would be a gigabyte limit to the account. It would be a total of six, nearly sixty dollars for five gigabytes per week, or two hundred dollars for twenty gigabytes per week. And we would like to propose using YouTube, because it is available for unlimited videos or gigabytes. We can list the video as private or public or unlist, and the cost is free. And this is how the screen would look. Should a resident want to listen to the audio file, we would upload it to YouTube and embed the file onto the city's webpage, therefore adhering to our social media policy, where we direct our residents back to our city website. Residents can then listen to the audio file and engage in it, necessarily meaning to toggle through to the part they'd like to hear. They would be able to also pause it, et cetera. With this, this is no additional time necessarily from staff to upload it to YouTube. It's already allotted for us to have this accessible on our website. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. I don't know if the same holds true for audio as it does for video, but for free accounts on YouTube, my understanding is it's about ten minutes that they allow. Is it different for an audio file?
This, we would load it as, we'd load the audio file to, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lorre Moore. We would load the audio file to YouTube, and it would still be free. It's not limited to any amount of time.
Okay, 'cause, all right, if you could double-check that, though, because I think on the videos, they cut you off at ten minutes, so I don't know if it's true or not for audio. So, but, yeah, okay. And, let me see here. Would we still, if we go with this path, would we still maintain these audio files somewhere else?
Yes, they would be stored on our server accounts, and this is just, basically, the idea to have the YouTube account as a file, audio hosting file, is just for residents' ease of being able to listen to our city council or our public safety planning commission meetings. It wouldn't necessarily be our only source of file hosting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Adam?
So, on your, your second slide there, did I hear you correctly, in that you can pageinate or click on a specific agenda item that you want to hear? Will we have that functionality on it?
No, we don't. Currently, if a resident, on the second slide, is this the slide you're referring to, Councilmember Rush?
Next one, yeah.
So, no, you cannot. So, currently, if you, currently, right now, if you went to the city's website and clicked on the audio file that you wanted to listen to, this is what would show, and you can't toggle through it. You have to listen through the entire audio for the portion of the council meeting or commission meeting you would like to get information from.
So, how do we get that functionality? Because I know in the county website, they stream it live, and then you can go back, and they have, like, the agenda, similar to what is shown on the previous slide, but has all the agenda item numbers, and say, you know, for tonight's meeting, I just wanted to hear about item eight point one. You could click on that, it would hyperlink to that specific portion of the audio file and just play it from there.
That's, that's a little more advanced than we're currently looking at. Currently, we, we just want to be able to address the issue of not being able to manipulate, not necessarily manipulate, but fast-forward or pause the audio file. Because currently, you, like I stated, you'd have to just listen to it in entirety, and then in two parts. So, from a personal example, when it came to the public hearing for the voting districts, I would have, I clicked on recording part one of three, and it wasn't in that portion. So, I had to then listen to the entirety of part two of three, or three of three, to find the exact minute and time of where our public hearings started. So, it's just trying to be a little more resident-friendly, for residents to toggle through, if that answers your questions. I think that that's a great idea to address in the future. However, at this time, we'd just like to be able to pause and fast-forward.
Yeah, if we could look into that in the future, I don't think it's that difficult to do, but that might be more of a convenience, but this is good for now, I think.
Councilmember Rush, could you restate the example you made reference to?
Uh, yeah, well, I know when I go on to the County Board of Supervisors website, you can, all, and all of their meetings are live-streamed now, but they store them like we do, and it comes up very similar to this. I think they use a different software, I think it's Vimeo, maybe it's YouTube. But on the side, like on a side panel, it has the running agenda, has every single agenda item, and each agenda item is a hyperlink. And so, if I just wanted to click on and listen to what happened, like for a lot of, you know, my stuff, it's just, did that item get approved? Click on one point one, and it'll fast-forward to that exact item, play that, and it'll continue playing, or you can go down to item, you know, seventeen point five, and click on that, and it will organize the audio file to which agenda item you click on.
Okay, we, we can certainly look into that for, for future use, and expand upon this as, as we implement it, but at this, at this moment, the main concern was that you cannot forward or rewind. So, if someone misses something that one of the council members should state in the recording, and they want to go back and, and listen to it, they have to start all the way back at the beginning and listen to the entire section. So, we're just trying to make it a little bit more user-friendly, but, but I agree with you, that would be a great tool, and we will look into that for future use.
I'd move item eight point one. Second.
Councilmember Lorre Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temtisari?
Aye.
Mayor Bootsma?
Aye.
Motion passes, five to zero.
Move to city manager, city staff report.
Good evening, honorable mayor and councilmembers. I would like to invite you to the September tenth Eastvale Day at the LA Fair. I believe some of you may have received invitations from the LA County Fair Board. This year, we are celebrating with a parade, so residents that are interested in being part of the Eastvale Community Parade at the LA County Fair are certainly encouraged to do so. There will be a reception in the Court of the Redwoods and a parade, and then we will be honoring community heroes. So, this year, there were several nominations given for various community heroes. We really promoted this throughout social media and the city's website, and I am very pleased to announce that Resident Jane Anderson has been chosen as Eastvale's community hero, and she will be honored at the LA County Fair on September tenth from nine to eleven, or excuse me, ten to eleven-thirty AM. And check-in begins at nine, and we hope that you will be there. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and city councilmembers. This evening, I just want to do a little report. Last week, we have received a report from, actually, an email from Councilman Rush regarding riverboat drive. A riverboat is a portion of Sliceman that was vacated. We changed the whole thing to riverboat. Ever since two thousand fourteen, Sliceman Road was realigned to connect to Hamner Avenue, and ever since the street was open, completely paved, we have received numerous phone calls and also reports that people mistakenly think that there is a true street, because if you look from, say, seven-eleven all the way to the east, especially at night, you will see that like a true street with the traffic signals, with the streetlights, completely clear, even though we have signs, say, dead end, private road, people still blowing the whole thing through all the way, and then even hit the bollards at the end. So, staff has had an internal meeting yesterday, and today, we had a meeting with D.R. Horton, which is a developer, that's responsible for this, and we have come up with certain plans, a series of measures to add more warning signs coming from, from Hamner all the way west, and those signs are believed to be helping, and staff would receive plans from engineers working for D.R. Horton, and review that accordingly to meet, to make sure that it meets MUDCD and traffic codes before we implement that in the field. So, we have taken measures to do that, working very closely with D.R. Horton. Just any questions you may ask?
Anything for the update? So, we have big sawhorses with big red flashing lights?
One of them to include the flasher, but we have to be cognizant, there are some residents in that area at night, we just have to make sure the lights are shielded properly so it's not going to disturb the residents at night especially. Thank you.
Good evening, council from the police department. I want to thank all the, the council members and city staff that helped us enjoy a very successful National Night Out last evening in the city of Norco. As I oversee three different contract cities with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, it's always been my vision that all three cities come together to celebrate their support of law enforcement, and that, that has definitely come to fruition, and I want to thank the city of Eastvale for, for participating, especially city staff for setting up a booth, but also the, the council members, and a special shout-out to Councilmember Lorre Moore, who was our balloon artist last night, did a really good job, but...
Lot of hot air down.
Lot of hot air being blown, that's for sure. But, just as a reminder to the council and the residents in attendance, that National Night Out is a event that was founded years ago with a goal of bringing neighborhoods together in a stance against crime, and to celebrate that with their law enforcement, and I think that last night's event definitely made a huge statement with hundreds of, of neighbors who came out, many of which were from the city of Eastvale, even though it was held in an adjacent city, and I just wanted to make sure that we, we got that on record tonight. So, thanks for, for all that came.
Thank you.
Good evening again. Councilmember Lorre Moore, staff did research it, and we just simply need to verify our YouTube account to get video or audio longer than ten, fifteen minutes. Two announcements, the fir, or one announcement, I'm sorry, is this Saturday from nine eleven at City Hall, we will be hosting a licensing event, so residents can come to City Hall. Pets need not be present, and renew or register their pets for licensing. So, we did post that on our social media account, and registration is also open for our CERT training in September. It is three days, twenty hours, it's a great experience. I, myself and other staff have gone through the training, and we hope our residents will do it as well. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to council comments. We'll start with Adam.
Thanks, sir. I don't have anything much, I just wanted to extend the thanks of Principal Thompson from Claire Barton for the, the short notice, and she appreciated everyone who was able to show up this morning. I, I got to do a scavenger hunt with the kindergartners, so that was interesting. So, she expresses her thanks and appreciation.
Okay, Dickie?
Nothing.
Okay, Joe?
Just that vector control's going to be doing a spray Friday morning between the hours of three and six, so that's August twelfth, and so they'll be spraying all along the riverbed, their normal pattern, to try and reduce the adult mosquito numbers. That's all I have.
Okay, Clint?
Thank you. Actually, I have a couple things to pass down to you, gentlemen. This is, and I'll leave, give some to staff and have these at City Hall, this is pamphlet for the Regional Conservation Authority, of which I'm a board member. There wasn't a recent, we'll be having a coming board meeting, but not this month, it was dark. But a couple of other board meetings I do have, and announcements from those committee meetings. For the League of California Cities, a golf tournament is going to be held on October tenth, and that is going to be taking place over at Morongo Golf Club at Tuckwet Canyon. So, that's going to be October tenth, I believe that is Columbus Day. So, it's a day off, but city staff, if you guys come on out, gentlemen, of course, yeah, come on out, it's going to be good. This is the fundraiser for the year for League of California Cities, the Riverside Division. Also, on October eleventh, this is with SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments, there will be a housing summit, and it's an open invitation to councilmembers that are interested in housing. It's going to be taking place in LA at the LA Hotel, which is around the corner from SCAG offices, and that's going to be going from eight until one-thirty. Let me see here, what else do I have? If you haven't, also for the council members, we received today, and I want to make sure everybody's been receiving these, the action alerts from the league. Okay, I don't know if we want to set it up where we all individually call, or I want to ask you guys, would it be better if we collectively get together on these action alerts and send letters, or?
I feel it would be better as a collection, you know, but I'm not sure.
You know, I'm open to suggestions. I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
Okay. No, it, it's not in our packet, it was sent by email from our league representative for the division, but I'll forward that to you. You can make your call, make calls to legislators, but I think if we could in the future figure out a way, if there is a desire to do so, that we could do it collectively instead of all of us individually putting that message forward. So, if we could bring that back, that would be great. Lastly, we had a, a division meeting for the League of California Cities on Monday of the executive board, which I'm a part, and I'm...
It was sent by email from our league representative for the division, but I'll forward that to you. You can make your call, make calls to legislators, but I think if we could in the future figure out a way, if there is a desire to do so, that we could do it collectively instead of all of us individually putting that message forward. So, if we could bring that back, that would be great. Lastly, we had a division meeting for the League of California Cities on Monday of the executive board, which I'm a part, and I'm very excited to announce I was just elected by that board to be the division director for Riverside County. So, that means that every state legislative, every state meeting for the league, I'll be there speaking on behalf of the county, all the cities in Riverside. So, I'm excited to be doing that, not only bringing Eastville to the table, but all of our county to the table, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So, that's it for announcements.
Okay. I just, like I say, I was honored to be at Claire Barton this morning, the first day of their traditional school, so it was a very fun morning, so, you know, and really, everybody was driving pretty decent, so there was no close calls.
Wait until the 200th day of school.
Yes. Okay, at this time, we'll adjourn to our closed-door session.
We will recess to closed session.
Okay.
Great job. I get to drive in that every day.
Thanks for coming out, CJ. I didn't know you were a face painting artist. I didn't know you were either. These are weird. Oh, I got two. Maybe three.
Have a good evening. No, I'm leaving. I made it through. Four minutes. John, four minutes. Four minutes. Did you time yourself?
Is that your first? Where's the bucket? Where's the bucket of Gatorade?
I know. It was your first Gatorade. It was four minutes.
Do they purposely keep you here long?
Yes, they do. Swear they do.
How does it practice, city? Mayor and council, you have the staff report.
[inaudible].